Not sure where all our heads are on the same page. Now, Mr. Comer, I think on this template, you need to leave room for one more name. And if he doesn't get hurt in his, I'll call it his senior year at Fayetteville, he will be going broke next year. So you might want to leave.
You read the man? I was going to wait for the question, but I like for we don't say pay.
All right, no problem. Alderman Burke?
Greg's, Greg's.
Greg.
His mother told my wife that.
Yeah, I think we will.
He doesn't get hurt, he is the one. But he wants to stay in the south. He doesn't really want to go to Minnesota. I guess he gets it.
You go where you paid.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, let's call questions then. All those in favor of putting up the signs, raise your hand. I see six, four, none again. All right, thank you, sir. Under Mayor's report, he has the B C I D C report that John's already given. I have the financial, you have the financial report that Donna provided. Any packet? Any discussion or questions? Under Police Chief, Police Chief Randy Peake is recognized at this time. Any questions for the chief? Do you have anything to say, Chief Peake?
Uh, we had a, I'll say a peaceful fourth. It was busy, causing fireworks. Uh, that's because much caused, high volume calls, but everything worked out. It was all very busy.
That was a burn ban on.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was a burn ban.
It was, but did not cover fireworks.
And what it said, it was kind of confusing.
Very confusing.
Yeah.
But.
Unconventional to me.
It's two sides, way understandable. Two sides of that thing. The county judge makes those burn bans, and I think they have to include the fireworks for them not to be popped, and that's where I understand it very well. So we, we tried to curtail the fire dangers to let people enjoy themselves at the same time. We had a over, a very large amount of calls. But other than that, everything was pretty peaceful.
Alderman, Fulton, you're recognized.
Uh, we had no business.
Thank you, sir.
How many, how many people is police?
Your office, sure.
Have you hired any?
I'm sorry, sir.
You have any new ones?
Uh, we are, we are doing the preliminary steps of backgrounds at this time on three people. One of those persons is certified. And we're waiting on some preliminary, preliminary paperwork to come back before we go forward with the full blown background to make sure everything else is good. But we are continuing to check, try to find the very best qualified people we can get.
And may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to me that I understood that we are really one short of where we normally are, that one position has not been filled for a long, long time.
Well, actually, I think it's two. There's three positions, but there's two that's only been filled in the past. So two is actually what we're hoping to be able to fill. Those slots just now.
Budget wise, you don't have the money for the third spot, so that's why it hasn't been filled, that we can, you know, increase our revenue. We won't be able to hire the third spot, but that would still give you, if two more would make it, it makes it possible where you don't run into all the overtime issues.
Yeah, because that overtime has really grown.
Yeah, it's been tough, and that's primarily because of the shortage of officers now. We have two new ones that just started this week.
That's correct. They started Monday morning. I will begin a little.
Two new.
Two officers.
Okay, so you just hired two, and you have, and you need two more?
Right, we were four short, and that's because you, and that created overtime issue.
It really did.
Oh, that's cute. So that's, that's why your overtime numbers are high. But once you get these two on, your numbers are going to drop significantly, and then if we two, hire two more, then you'd be in good shape. It'll make you enable to take vacations, et cetera.
One of these officers is certified, so as soon as he gets his uniform, he will go to work on the streets immediately. The other officer's not.
Relocating here?
The one officer certified is originally from here. And he is, yes, right here, Mr. Hines, Aaron Hines, he's originally from here. He was a deputy in Jefferson County. Relocating back to Warren. That's your name, that's your name.
That's who I thought that was.
And Alderman Burke is recognized.
Do we ever do any kind of consulting with some human resource person that can assist? Because apparently this takes up a lot of time as far as background and on your part and all of that. We had some access to a person that had more time and expertise than looking at statewide or wherever to see if there's those individuals that are available. We have a lot of my fellow veterans that ETS'ing now, and they should be looking for jobs. I mean, we had some person, some resource person that could be more specific and focusing on that, that would free you up to manage your department rather than going ahead and doing all this yourself.
Well, to answer, to answer this question or give you information, we did team up with Michael Harding with Workforce Services on the veteran side of this thing. We did hire one of these young men that's not, I say he's a veteran, he did not retire the military, but he did serve in the military. We did have another gentleman that came in week before last, who had just retired and was looking at locating, relocating to Warren. And Michael sent him to me, and I did interview him, and he was outstanding candidate, but he has not got his paperwork back yet.
I mean, I understand, I understand side of parties, but I'm just talking about a, a person who deals specifically in that area as far as dealing with finding the right people, you know.
To my knowledge, and again, I may be, I stand to be corrected, but to my knowledge, know even a little lot, State Place, Hollywood Place, all these agencies do their own backgrounds. And originally do that because certain people you're looking for. And you spend a lot of money with these agencies trying to pick out someone, and once they pick them out for you, it may not be someone that meets the criteria, although you say, this is what I'm looking for, they're trying to make a dollar also. These backgrounds are, are kind of given out. I do some CID, most of those guys do some of the backgrounds, so it's just not, it is time to concern, but it's very important.
Well, does, does the Civil Service Commission see all of the people?
The people that the background, thorough backgrounds are trained on, complete background are trained on, yes, they do.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, thank you, Chief. Fire Committee, I don't see the Fire Chief. Alderman Reed.
We have no business.
All right, Sanitation Manager, Mike May. You have his monthly report in your packet. In the year to date, we're running a little bit over with expenses over what it, what we're taking in. But I would think that would probably be normal considering the fact that what the price of fuel is.
You know, we started out in January, fifteen thousand dollar truck expense that hit pretty hard, and we're only caught up from that. I think tomato satisfied just a little bit this month as far as what I've been going, about two thousand dollars over what we're normal monthly expenses are with labor. We're slowly but surely catching up, making up that debt since we started out.
Any questions for Mike on the under sanitation, Alderman Mosley, you're recognized?
Well, no business at the time, Mike.
Building officials, you have the monthly report in your packet. Any questions on the monthly report or about building codes, et cetera? Okay, thank you, sir. Street Form and Tommy Adams, you're recognized?
We started getting on the street, trying to overlay as far as getting the grass offside, patching what's in holes, need to patch, whatever. Uh, our painting on the street, they still lack a little white, few of the handicaps, police has lacked yet, but they don't like a whole lot on that. And we've been doing a lot of bush hogging, and the way we've been doing that, spends are dry and all that, I didn't want to send no bush hogs out in the middle of the day because they hit a rock, or hit anything, you got to fire them, you know. So what we've been doing is bush hogging till about dinner, and then we've been kicking up with our odds and ends stuff over the evening. Worked out real good. And about all we lack on being around with the bush hog, it's just that there, we like a little bush hogging down there, but we, we pretty well up with it all the way around.
Any questions for Street Form? Alderman Burke, you're recognized, Chairman of the Street Committee? No business. Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
No business.
All right, thank you, thank you. Commission on Economic Development, I'd ask Joel Tofried to attend the economic summit at the Cornerstone Coalition, and at this time, I'd like Alderman Tofried to, if he would, bring us up to date on that economic summit. Alderman Tofried, you're recognized.
Well, it was held at U A M, and it was represented, I guess, far away as a little north of Stuttgart and all the way down to the Mississippi River, I guess, they're going into that regional approach also again. And you had different heads of department, Denise Pennington was there, and I guess you had somebody from Southeast Arkansas River Corporation, and it was just a wide array. I guess it was, if you've been off in economic development, you had a regular smorgasbord of people that's been working around the state at certain projects, one thing or another. And they talked about adult education and retraining people. But like I asked a question, you know, it seemed like sometimes we want to catch the tail instead of catching the head. You know, we're pouring so much money into these shutdowns on reeducation. It seemed like to me, if you're teaching the three R's at the first beginning, you could do away with some of that on the back end because a lot of these people still aren't ready to access things that they need to access on the educational end. And then they had a deal on the information highway. Everybody knows we're not going to be able to get in the ballgame if we don't have access to the information highway, you know. Three G was big for a while. Now, if you don't have four G, you kind of left behind on the phone end, and you don't have certain areas to access. But then I was thinking, you know, like Mr. Lipton had said in the past, if we parlay all the hospitals, the high schools, and everybody else that has a piece in the ballgame to get that sort of thing here off of hubs, say, for instance, like U A M, that maybe we could achieve that. And on Denise's end, the thing that always catches my eye on this type deal is the assistance that the state can give. And then she had about three or different presentations in three different pots of money, but it's sometimes I think we overlook that, you know, tourism, like this past weekend, we was kind of loaded down with the all school reunion, and these people was kind of spending a lot of money, you know, chicken wire and everything else from that nature, to, you know, just sodas and water at the store because they have floats and things. And they had a little bitty party in there where you could receive him for tourism. And I still believe with all the hidden treasures we have around here, that ought to be something that we access before everybody else kind of catch on to it down here because Lake Village and that corridor up through Dumas, up to Arkansas River, seem like they are pushing hard to get their access and their hands on some of that money. And then there was another thing that they promoted, you know, on the economic side of it, you're broke down in counties on the money you receive, on how much you had to pay, or what type of jobs, brow that you have to supply before the state gives you that money. And my question to them were, if we're supposed to be an originalized system, is what you always tell us, why do you still have us broke down in counties on how much you can receive instead of presenting us with a unified package deal that South Arkansas can receive together as a lump sum instead of keep hitting us against one another? Then on the other side of the room, you're telling us it's supposed to go with everything like we do with the intermodal facility over there. So how can you differentiate which one you would get? Would you get Bradley County's rate, or would you get Marcel's rate, which we're in the same pot? And I think we should always get the lower rate since we're in Southeast Arkansas. And not to linger this alone, if anybody have any further questions, I'd be happy to talk to anybody, any length of time about things that went on, but it's always a constant thread to them. They always got the, the grants, the monies, but the loopholes that you have to continue to jump through are the things that choke the life out of your projects. Thank you.
Any questions for Alderman Tofried? Here none? Any further business, Alderman Tofried?
No, not this time.
All right, thank you. Ways and Means Committee, Alderman Henderson is recognized.
The committee has not met, but we will be meeting shortly to have a meeting to review the semi-annual budget review. However, we do have in our packet the tenure pay for 2012, and it is listed with no changes. And I move that the plan that has been presented that's in our package, the approved total amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and twelve cents to include the F I C A taxes and the retirement.
Alderman Henderson, so just to pay the tenure bonus, second vote, Alderman Reed, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, none again.
Uh, the.
Oh, hold it. Can you amend your, just state in your motion when to pay it, and let's pay it, one of these. First part of August, is that all right? Does it have that in your motion?
Like when list is getting paid, everybody's getting it at the best time.
You want it effective August one? Is that what you're saying? Okay, with an effective date of August one, twenty twelve.
Great, thank you.
Is that okay with your?
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Secondly, I would like to bring to your attention the overtime pay sheet, and thank you very much for doing this on a quarterly basis, Jeannie. It's separate explanatory, but we do ask that you, each council member, please review it, and I'm asking the Ways and Means Committee members if you would have this when we actually have our committee meeting. So it's for information now. And then the last item that is listed, you will find a memorandum of agreement between the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission and the City of Warren, and it does have the word draft listed on it, and we know that when there's an M O A, that money is involved, and if there's an M O U, it's just an understanding. So this one does have dollars that is involved, and it did have a few errors listed to include our mayor's name.
There you go.
Being incorrectly spelled, but anyway, without any further ado, Mayor, would you please elaborate on this?
Well, I, I need the Ways and Means Committee when we have our meeting.
You want to talk about it anymore?
I want it to be considered to direct me to sign it, which would be, or authorize me to sign this agreement, but it needs to be discussed in some detail in the Ways and Means Committee. We had our attorney look at it, and legally it's fine, it's just some of the money numbers we need to discuss before y'all authorize me to sign it.
So the attorney has reviewed?
Yes.
It's still saying draft, so is it going to be?
Well, we've got a few changes that we'd like the Ways and Means to, but I want y'all to have a copy of it on the front end.
I have another page I'd like to suggest in the committee.
Okay, so committee members, would you please also have with you this draft of M O A? And that ends my report.
I miss this Henderson.
Yes.
Uh, just going to make this overtime on this roll, do you like this?
Yes.
Twenty-seven, two thousand, seven, 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 six, four, first quarter?
Yes.
And the second quarter, four thousand?
That's what it says, four thousand, forty-three dollars and forty cents. And I'm, I'm looking, I mean, most of those, I mean, you're looking at a big job, almost a ten thousand dollar job from quarter, from last year up until this point. However, we, we do understand the fact that we were, you know, pretty much doing the whole quarter, you know, down two people, down three people, but, but yes, that is correct, unless Jeannie's calculation is incorrect.
Now, he's straightfully from the payroll strike.
These are all from payroll.
So it's coming from the payroll?
Right. You were four officers short, and it kind of depended on who caught, uh, who caught work at nights and swing shifts and things like that.
And we knew that it was going to be high, I mean, we anticipated that, but this is a little bit, but.
And one of the, Zach, your particular person you refer to also works weekends, taking care of Ezra does the dog problem Monday through Friday, and then on the weekends, Roy Delastis handles it, so he ends up working every Saturday and every Sunday. So that consequently is overtime, that's why his numbers are less good.
And then the other way to look at it is that you're not paying benefits for another person, I mean.
You're not paying the other four officers, that's offset.
Yeah, so it kind of offsets itself. I mean, it appears to be way, way, uh, portion, but when you look at reality, it, it kind of offsets itself.
I'm a little retarded.
Don't be retarded on this one.
Alderman Henderson, anything else?
No, my report was over until he asked his question.
Uh, all right, thanks very much. Planning Commission, you have no meeting. Aviation, there was no meeting, but we did accept bids to extend the taxiway on the airport, and you have the bid tab in front of you, Pioneer Civil Construction was the low bidder. There is an issue with F F A, this is a ninety-five percent, five percent grant, meaning ninety-five percent is paid by F F A, five percent is paid by the state. F F A money, we're a little bit short on their portion, so this, we need to accept the bid contingent on F, what's called F F A funding, contingent on them funding their project a hundred percent. Does that make sense? F F A is going to pay ninety-five percent of the six hundred and thirty-two thousand, but we need an agreement from them before we let this builder go to work, so we need a, we need a way to say, yeah, we accept your bid contingent on F F A funding the project. And that's what would be in order for the motion.
I so moved.
Second, have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Where's this found new civil construction from?
Project.
Only one we have from Warren is Deion, I mean Bradley County is Deion?
The only one that's accepted, yes, sir. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, accepted the bid of six hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars contingent on F F A funding. All those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. I see six, four, none again, thank you very much. Water and Sewer, you have the minutes and the balance sheet. Parks and Rec. Uh, we have the Parks and Rec Director here, and he can give you a report on what he was doing. Mr. Renus Hartn is recognized at this time.
Uh, we're gonna, what we're gonna do back at the end?
Yes, we need to, you want to explain what we have on our mind now?
We're trying to take a fence down off of the hill behind Armory and just tie it into the buildings, and that way they would have that hill for other things that we can use for us. Fence's in, it's a good ground, I had to park those Armory trucks there for a long time, can use it for different things. We'll give more room to the park.
You'll still be able to get your van out because we're going to have a, we'll have a gate access. So we would like a motion to approve spending the thirty-two hundred dollars.
And it's to mainly have more room.
Just more room with the park, because it's just kind of wasted up there, it's nothing.
I move that we move forward with having the old Armory fence removed and reinstalled in the amount of three thousand, two hundred dollars.
Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, none again, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Hartn?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. Housing Authority, you have your report? I don't have anything to add to the Housing Authority, I think Mike told me they were actually going to be meeting in Rising tonight, and they're talking about building houses. You had item seven, or the meeting tonight, where the public meeting to allow him to build the houses in Cleveland County, so I think it's means more business for Mitchell Luntz than Alderman Tofried.
I would just like to give Mr. Jolly kudos at Twin Rivers, he had a couple concerned elderly people with bushes growed up on, on their porch there, and they was concerned about getting out of church late and going into their house, and so when I got back off of vacation, he had cut them all the way down to the ground, so I'm, I'm sure that they ought to be happy with that, I just wanted to appreciate his response.
Thank you, sir.
What'd you say?
You have the Cultural Center report in your hand, unfinished, there's no unfinished business. We have public statements, it's time anybody like to recognize or speak to the city council. Here none? New business, none, announcements, so I don't have any, anybody have an announcement in the city council? Any, Alderman, have any announcements? All right, with item fourteen, pay the bills.
Sir.
Motion and second to pay the bills. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, raise your hand. The meeting is set for Monday, the thirteenth, in this little way I changed. Now, going back to public statements. Did you want to make a public statement?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward and make your statement. With the council's permission, I'll go back to item eleven, and I allow.
Sir.
We don't have to make a motion on that.
I thought I'm going.
Taking administrative privilege and allow.
I'd like to thank America this time, and also Alderman, you're doing a wonderful job, keep up the good work.
Tell them what you really do.
But at this time, as one of your civil service commissioners, and also thanks to you all for providing that position, I am greatly concerned about a lot of phone calls I've been receiving due to the fact that a lot of applicants that have applied have not been interviewed, a matter of fact, we don't even see their applications. And as Mr. Burke was speaking earlier, you know, I would like for y'all to consider another way of, you know, maybe them being interviewed, someone else doing a background check. And I'm concerned because I don't want us to be sued, I don't want the city of Warren to be sued. My son put in application, and being a civil service commissioner, you would think I would have got a chance to interview him, but for whatever reason, we never saw his application. But also certified officers put in applications, they called me and were qualified, some with degrees, and we never saw their applications, so I don't know, you know, exactly what the procedure, we never had any training as far as being a civil service commissioner or something. I really don't know what my duties are, other than just saying okay to whoever's put before us, and, and I'm really concerned about that, because I've seen people coming in as dispatchers that are related to other people. Because I've seen people coming in as dispatchers that are related to other people and we never see anything concerning hiring dispatchers. So maybe you all can enlighten me as far as just what our duties are and what can we do to resolve this issue?
Well, I must tell, I've never seen any of the procedures that is set for the civil service commission. And I would love to see, get my hands on, I'm comfortable with what they, what their duties are and the correct procedure that should be taking place.
We will proceed to get that information. So thank you.
Thank you for the time.
You're welcome. Now, item sixteen.
Make a move with the jury.
Is there a second? All those in favor, stand.
A motion.
Oh, excuse me, Marty.